Okay, so we are approaching that seven o'clock hour. I just want to welcome all the candidates that have joined us this evening. My name is Desiree Futel. I am the Vice President of Voter Service for the League of Women Voters Cincinnati Area. So what I would like you candidates to do, if you haven't already, place your phone or computer into gallery mode so that you can see everyone as we're speaking. We have our timer here who is going to give us warnings. So for the three questions that we sent you guys, there will be a two minutes allotted. So you'll be reminded at the one minute mark, at the 30 second mark and the stop mark. Once the stop comes up, we will allow about five to 10 seconds for you to finish your thought and then you will be muted. So just so you know, we are going to go ahead and get started. Thank you, everyone who is watching on the live stream on Facebook. I just wanted to say that this event is hosted by the League of Women Voters Cincinnati Area. Our co-sponsors for this evening is the Women's City Club of Greater Cincinnati, as well as the Urban League of Southwestern Ohio. We had to do this event in such a way for the sheer magnitude of candidates that are running for city council this election season. So this is our seven o'clock hour. First, we're going to start with introductions. And I also wanted to mention to the candidates that all the questions that are being asked will also be in the chat for reference. So our first question is the introduction. Please introduce yourself and share your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department. And we are going to start with Kevin Flynn.
Thank you, Desiree. I am Kevin Flynn. I served on city council from 2013 till 2017. I decided not to run for reelection in 2017 and decided to continue my public service, serving on nonprofit boards and working towards a passion of mine, which is accessibility for persons with disabilities. During my prior service on city council, I was proud to serve as the Vice Chair of the Law and Public Safety Committee. I thought we did a lot of good things during that time, including working very diligently and for a very long time on developing appropriate protocols for body cameras, which were new at that time. And we developed a system that said it's all going to be visible. And the body cameras are going to be continuously operating. And so even if something happens before the officer would turn it on, for 30 seconds before that and for 30 seconds after they turn it off, we'll still be able to see what's happening on body cameras. We need to be the lead national leaders again in policing across our country. We need to be data-driven. We need to be responsive and we need to focus on community-oriented policing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Councilman Greg Lansman.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for doing this. I was a teacher. My parents were teachers. I've been doing child education advocacy work my entire life. Before I ran for council in 2017, I helped to lead a ballot measure to provide two years of quality preschool for Cincinnati's three and four-year-olds, families that couldn't otherwise afford it. It passed alongside much-needed funding for our school system. And that's the preschool promise. I still do a lot of work with them as a volunteer on council. My focus has been on making Cincinnati an infinitely better place for children and families, particularly those most marginalized. So started with a big focus on housing stability, past comprehensive eviction prevention reform, the first ever eviction prevention fund, which has helped pay rent for thousands of families, keeping them in their homes, secured one of the largest increases in youth jobs ever. We've more than doubled our pedestrian safety investments, which has allowed us to see a major decline in pedestrian accidents. And just recently proposed and we'll see funding for the revised Safe and Clean Fund to allow for community-driven safety plans. My vision is for policing is that is based in part in my belief that safety, public safety is a basic fundamental right that should not be denied to anyone. And so having a department that's working really closely with police, building community-driven safety plans and council, I have helped to reestablish, strengthen the MAGA, making sure they're meeting regularly, fought for fully, fought for full funding of the Citizen Complaint Authority, worked to make sure that everyone had the body cameras and, as I just mentioned, re-establishing the Safe and Clean Fund, which will help to support community-driven safety plans all over the city.
Thank you so much. Next for introductions is Galen Gordon.
Good evening. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and your sponsors for creating this opportunity for the community to be able to get to know the council candidates. My name is Galen Gordon and I am a Charter Committee endorsed candidate for city council because, and I'm running for city council because I believe we need proactive and intentional leadership from our local government. My vision for the Cincinnati Police Department is one of transparency and accountability. And I will work first to empower and encourage our police officers to increase visibility and to get out of their car and become more approachable within our neighborhoods. And we need police, like I said, out of their car and engaging with our residents whenever possible. And I envision a police department that utilizes mental health resources more proactively. And I believe we need a mobile crisis team in five out of the six districts that we have. I want our police officers to view the Citizens Complaint Authority as a transparent review process, one that can protect our officers, as well as it protects citizens who may experience police misconduct. And so I also envision a police department with more diversity, with greater diversity of women and people of color. We've got a great police department, in my opinion. It's important that the agency, which deals with the public, is able to adapt to changing times, ideas and processes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Victoria Parks.
Good evening and Desiree, and thank you for providing this opportunity. I am Victoria Parks. After growing up in Calhoun, serving in the United States Air Force and working as Development Director at Women's Crisis Center, also National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, I served as Chief of Staff to County Commissioner Todd Petu. When Todd stepped down for health reasons, he handpicked me to complete his term. So this time last year, I was your county commissioner. While county commissioner, I enacted the ABLE Program, which is an acronym for Active Bystander in Law Enforcement. This program requires police officers to be responsible for stopping violence and malfeasance that they witness in their department by actively intervening. They are obligated to and trained to physically stop their partners from violent actions if it comes to that. This program is a first step toward a more ethical and community-focused police force. Many candidates would talk about what they want to do. I'm here to tell you what I have done. I have created meaningful reform to the Hamilton County Department and I will work to do it again at the city with the spirit of collaboration and good faith and a goal of meaningful reform. I know our police department can become a force for good in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Jackie Frondor. Please unmute me.
That would help, wouldn't it? Hi, Desiree. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and all the other sponsors for putting this together. It's an honor to be here with my fellow council candidates. Yes, my name is Jackie Frondor and I'm running for Cincinnati City Council to bring Mother's Perspective to City Hall. I live in the neighborhood of Westwood with my husband and our five children. Our son is our first born, he's 11. Then we have four girls after that, eight, six, four and two. As a young mother, I see our city through a different lens. I see ways in which our city can work better for young families. And I want to help our city move forward with that, with that vision that I have. I also know ways in which we can retain and keep families living and working in our city. Because unfortunately, we have a lot of families that are moving outside of the city, to places like Madeira and Westchester and Loveland. And we don't want that to happen. We want to keep them here. So I also have a degree in economics from the University of Toledo. One of the favorite things I learned there was the theory of opportunity cost. And when making a decision, we don't only think of the direction that that one decision takes us. We have to think of all of the lost opportunities with that choice we made. So when going through the budget, I can utilize that theory to make sure that I'm utilizing city dollars to their fullest potential. I'm a fourth grade teacher, so I have, you know, I'm able to work with children every day and I love it so much. I came from a really rough background. My mother was a drug addict and was arrested multiple times, spent a lot of time in jail. My father struggled with alcoholism. So I know how much mental health takes a role in the policing and how if we can reduce mental health instances, we can help reduce the need for policing in that stance. So I believe that the city police department needs to have what they need to do their job in the city.
Thank you so much. And the last introduction we're going to have is John Mayer.
Hello, Desiree, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for the invitation. My name's John Mayer. I'm a Northsider, Cincinnati all my life. I went to school for creative performance arts, graduated from New High School, and I went to the University of Cincinnati. I'm in construction right now. I'm a project manager for a local construction company and I've been rehabbing my community for at least the last 20 years. So my vision for the police department is one with better community engagement, better crisis response and one that's improving its racial disparities. You know, in order to provide safety and security within all 52 of our city's neighborhoods, our relationships with the local police force is critical. We must focus on building trusted and healthy relationships. And this starts by leaning upon things that we know that work, such as police officers being active parts of their community or walking the beats on communities they serve. So city-sponsored youth services also that focused on police and community engagement are also important tools to combat crime. I will look for ways to expand 911 services that include unarmed, trained professionals to respond to field calls in an effort to out, in an effort to enhance outcomes for all. These actions, along with fully funding the Citizens Complaint Authority, will have measurable impact on rebuilding trust and bonds with the men and women serving in uniform. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I want to again thank all the candidates for attending tonight's forum. And I would like to mention to our viewers that this forum is very unique. We are asking candidates specific questions about their views on policing, police reform and issues of race that we have seen in our city. The reason why is we felt that the issue of policing and race is one of the benchmarks on how candidates view their role and how they see our community's future. So we felt like it would be a good way to differentiate through so many candidates. In addition to this forum, as many of you know, we will have our voter guides, our printed voter guides, which we ask all the candidates for their responses. They will be available in the Cincinnati Herald in their first edition in October, which will be released October 7. And if you're interested in picking up additional copies of the voter guide for your church or community group, you can go onto the League of Women Voters Cincinnati Area website and place a request for bulk copies of the voter guide, which will also be available the first week of October. So we are moving right along. We are going to go to our second question. Our second question is, police are being asked to respond to social, community and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this? And we are starting with Jackie Frondor.
I'll mute myself this time. Okay, so yes, I think our city needs to hire more mental health specialists work, to work alongside the police on this. Mental health and social issues, they need more funding out of our budget. There's no question about that. So from reviewing the budget, I do believe that there are areas in which we can pull funding to be able to fund these initiatives. I also believe, you know, back to what I said before, that if we can keep families living and working in our city and growing our population, we can increase our tax pool to be able to support these initiatives, to be able to have more mental health specialists on, you know, within our city, working with the police on these calls that unfortunately, yeah, they're taking. I did a police ride-along and it was an amazing experience and we did take some mental health calls. And even though the officer handled the situation with grace and de-escalated the situation when needed, it would have been great for them to be accompanied by a mental health specialist. Actually, at my neighbor's house, there was an incident where they had a mental, a person who was experiencing a mental crisis on their front porch. They were speaking diligently. They were threatening themselves and others. Police arrived quickly, de-escalated the situation, was fantastic. You know, it didn't turn into something bad. But had a mental health specialist been there to accompany them, that individual would have received more services to prevent that from happening again. So if we prioritize these programs for our youth and for adults to help with mental health services, quality advice services, we can reduce the need, we can reduce the instances of those occurrences and therefore reduce the need for the police to be showing up at these events.
Next for question two, we're going to have Galen Gordon.
Thank you. I would determine, do we have officers on staff right now who maybe have education in mental health intervention or crisis intervention? Like, are there officers currently on the staff? And see if we can give them some enhanced training, de-escalation techniques. I would use this as a monetary incentive for officers who want to opt into this program. And so also create that level of training for maybe officers who don't already have that knowledge. And so let's incentivize the officers to get this training. We can do that for sure. I think we need to improve public awareness on the resources that currently are at our disposal. We have a mobile crisis team. I'm not sure people are aware of that. And I definitely don't believe people are knowledgeable about how to reach the unit and that that is a reliable option instead of calling 911. It seems like we call 911 because we're so desperate for help and support. But that's really for last-minute emergency and there's better ways that we can get help sometimes. We can utilize our community councils and our mental health agencies now to build a program for the community to better identify symptoms and/or issues before they become an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have John Mayer.
Thank you. I think crisis response really is a top priority. Many of the calls that come into 911 don't always require a police officer. And as councilman, I'll look for ways to make services more effective and efficient. I'll look for ways to expand 911 to include unarmed, trained professionals to respond to field calls in an effort to increase the outcomes for everybody involved. We really have to start focusing on mental health. We see a lot of people out here are truly suffering and it doesn't take a long walk on any street around most of our neighborhoods to see it. This, you know, we can build stronger community relations and free up police officers by bringing on these mental health crisis units. These actions, along with fully funding the Citizens Complaint Authority, will have measurable impact on rebuilding the bonds with the men and women who serve with the communities. And that's what we really want to do is just build community. You know, I love Cincinnati. I'm from Cincinnati and I have blood, bled, sweated and cried all over doing work for it. And we have to pour that back into our communities. I also think possibly having a isolated number for the mental health unit would be great. People shouldn't have to try so hard to call the right number. It should be out there. And the police themselves should be sending, you know, the police should be able to determine in the 911 office who needs to respond. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I am going to go ahead and read the question again, just in case we have any viewers that are just now logging on. And I just wanted to mention that this is an event sponsored by the League of Women Voters Cincinnati Area, as well as the Women's City Club of Greater Cincinnati and the Urban League of Southwestern Ohio. The candidates that we have here tonight are answering the question, which is, police are being asked to respond to social, community and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this? And next speaking is Councilmember Greg Lansman.
Thanks, three things. One, the mental health crisis is a national one, certainly coming out of this pandemic. I've been working with the Health Department and the manager on expanding what the Cincinnati Health Department offers in terms of mental health supports. I think we have to grow that body of work dramatically. We helped fund a lead psychologist, but there are social workers and mental health experts all over the country that can provide supports here to our folks. And there are folks here that can do it. But growing that part of our Health Department is a huge priority for me and that will make a big difference. Number two, at the heart of the collaborative is problem solving and a commitment to problem solving, using data, bringing people together to problem solve. I passed legislation that asks the administration to start working on the data coming into the call center to determine what a differentiated response plan would look like, doing it in partnership with the community. So being very data-driven, that work is underway. And then third, and finally, the community-driven safety plan work that hopefully will pass in the next couple of weeks with the Safe and Clean Fund is all about empowering communities to pull all of their partners together, give them the SARA problem-solving training and help them build a plan where people are working together, they know each other's names and they're part of the same body of work. That plan gets submitted, worked on and ultimately funded. And that will make a big difference in terms of how calls are dealt with and the number of calls. It will dramatically decrease the number of calls for service.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Kevin Flynn.
Thank you, Desiree. I'd say the police have always been asked to respond to social, community and health problems. This is not something new. The scourge of drugs in our community and serving on the Board of the Center for Addiction Treatment for the last four years, you see that there are a lot of codependencies there between mental health issues and drug addiction. And you know, there's just no easy answer to this. And it's not an easy answer to say, well, we just need to get cops out, walk in the beat to get to know the community because our cops are constantly responding to calls for service. They're at 100 or more under their authorized strength right now. And asking a 911 operator to make a decision over the phone as to whether this justifies sending a mental health professional versus a police officer is only going to get our 911 operators in more trouble and probably result in worse results. We need to train, I agree with my colleagues here on the panel. We need to get better training for the police. And as Galen said, many of them have some of that training. Let's enhance that training. And when they identify an issue, let's get the appropriate professionals there. So, you know, we can't arrest our way out of these problems. The police chiefs all acknowledge that. Let's, let's roll our sleeves up and it's not an easy answer. Thank you.
Last, we're going to have a response from Victoria Parks.
Thank you. It is vital that we take a more comprehensive view of public safety. I deeply respect our police and believe that most of them serve honorably. But we are not doing them any favors by asking them to respond to situations they are in. Addiction and drug abuse ought to be dealt with by experts in those fields. Issues of mental health ought to be addressed by social workers. Homelessness ought to be addressed by investing in affordable housing and more living wage jobs. We must address these issues at their roots through increased investment in human services rather than continuously putting police officers in danger and providing no resources to those who have hit their lowest point and need support from their community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are moving right along this evening. We are going to question three, but quickly before I read the next question, I wanted to mention to our viewers that in addition to the voter guides being available the first week of October, we do have all the information that is going to be in the voter guide, accessible online at our website, vote411.org, which is an excellent resource for you to not only research candidates and find out their responses to our questions, but you can check if your voter registration is up to date. You can find your polling location as well as research and select candidate and candidates and create a personalized ballot so that when you go into the polls or when you vote, you already have your candidate selections picked out for you. So please remember to use vote411.org. So our third question for this evening is, police, excuse me, Cincinnati police data shows racial disparities in police use of force against civilians. The city's population is 42% black, yet 75% of police use of force incidents are against African-Americans. How would you respond to this issue? And we are going to be starting with John Mayer. Make sure you unmute, please.
The area of racial disparities is an opportunity for us to approve across the board in Cincinnati in health, housing and as well as the data presented by you just now. This is going to take intentional and forward-thinking and a community approach, coming together to make these improvements. First, I would like to commit to facilitating conversations with community leaders and police leadership to define the goals, strategies, needed resources and the next steps. We truly have a core of that.
This has to be collective in order to address this together. Specifically with trying to address racial disparity, I think we have to focus on equity. We have to share economic prosperity, more equity, equitably. Cincinnati needs to grow to survive and thrive, but we need to do so equitably. And too many cities have tried to invest way or build out of to prosperity, but they leave the lifeblood of the community behind. So basically, we need to continue to expand black ownership in businesses, in property and in community ownership and neighborhood ownership.
Thank you so much. Next, we are going to have Victoria Parks.
Thank you. As a black woman, this is obviously an issue close to my heart as I have seen the pain it causes families and communities. This is exactly why last year I authored the resolution declaring racism of public health crises in Hamilton County. Race showed disparities in our healthcare system, police use of force and housing and job opportunities all create a lower life expectancy and standard of living for black Cincinnadians. And this must end. I created policy to address these systemic inequalities in that declaration. The policies include the expansion of the Office of Economic Inclusion and Equity, working with the Oral Health Coalition, the creation and funding of Hamilton County's disparity study, the implementation of active bystander training and implicit bias training for police officers, partnership and education with the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center and so much more. I did all of this at the county and it made a difference. I have the experience, the passion and the wisdom to implement many of these policies and more at the city. I hope to have your support and you can go to voteparks.com to join our team or donate to my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Galen Gordon respond.
Thank you. You know, our police department should look like our city. And so we need to encourage more women. We need to encourage more people of color to work in law enforcement. We need to improve and enhance. We've got the Explorer Program, so we need to improve and enhance that program, make it more robust. We need to find a way to bridge the gap. It's my understanding you can't go to the academy until you're twenty or twenty one. So we got to bridge that gap between eighteen and twenty one. Maybe that's through education, peace officer education, some other kind of certification where people come out of the Explorer Program, they go get this further training, go to the academy, if they make it to the academy, maybe we incentivize them and pay for their two year education. You've got people who are now invested in the police department, people who have a positive experience with the city and the police. And so I think they're going to go and do a positive job being on the force. I also think it's important that we incentivize our police officers to live within the city limits. Certainly, it's not something I don't think you can mandate, but we need our police officers to to live in the city. I think there's a stronger connection with the people you serve when those same people are your neighbor. And it's important that we maintain and fully fund the Citizens Complaint Authority. That's huge. We need to find a way, that's the only way you're going to be able to build trust with the residents who believe that the process is working. The CCA needs to be fully funded so that it can work and get through these cases so that our residents see that there is transparency and there is accountability if officers are found to be doing wrong. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Jackie Frondor.
Yeah, that's a really saddening statistic. One of the ways I think we can try to start to address this is making sure our officers are receiving adequate implicit bias training. So, you know, in doing so, we would be able to identify officers that, you know, potential officers that that cannot eliminate that that bias and and not allow them on the force. Another, you know, tool we can use is encouraging the use of the Citizens Complaint Authority. That's a great tool. Ensuring that it's continually funded is going to allow us to, you know, make sure that accountability is at the front of the conversation. You know, it is it is for the the safety of the police officers and the safety of our citizens, making sure that everyone is held accountable for for situations that arise. The good officers, you know, will will be will be brought to light and bad officers will will be brought to light as well and we'll be able to to get rid of them. And then we need to, another aspect of this is reducing poverty. You know, when unfortunately, you know, we see in areas of high poverty, we see higher crime levels. And, you know, so so getting neighborhoods, getting families out of poverty, you know, more affordable housing, affordable childcare, a big part of my platform, access to job opportunities, access to more opportunities, those are going to help raise families out of poverty. And if we can do that, if we can reduce poverty, we can reduce crime. We also need to provide places for youth, teens and young adults to spend their time in a productive, positive environment. If we can do this, we're going to give them access to opportunities, access to you know, positive enforcement that are going to allow them to turn to these opportunities instead of turning to crime.
Thank you so much. I am going to read the question again, just for any viewers that might just now be logging on. Again, this is the City of Cincinnati City Council Forum. This is our, I guess, fourth hour. So we have one more group of people coming on at eight o'clock. So the question that's being answered is Cincinnati Police Data Show Racial Disparities in Police Use of Force Against Civilians. The city's population is forty two percent black, yet seventy five percent of police use of force incidents are against African Americans. How would you respond to this issue? And next we have speaking Kevin Flynn.
Thank you, Desiree, and thank you for doing this hour after hour because I know it can't be easy for you. That that's a terrible statistic and you know, I I don't think I can get it. I don't think I can understand it in the way that someone who has lived that can understand it. I'm a white guy. I've never been afraid of the cops. I grew up, if you were in trouble, you went to the cops. And not everyone has had that experience. There's a great book that was just published. I was fortunate enough, my friend Mel Gravely wrote this book. I don't know how he had time, but he wrote the book. It's called My White Friend. And it's an attempt to start the dialogue between our races so that we can understand each other. And Mel would say he's lived that, you know, he's been stopped for driving while blacks. And I have no doubt that there are instances where police officers, white or black, are more prone to use force against a black suspect. That's why we have CCA. We now have Gabe in there as the Executive Director. He's doing a great job. They're going to get through that backlog. The process at CCA must be a fair and open, transparent process or the police officers aren't going to believe the outcome and the citizens aren't going to believe the outcome. But if we have a good process, that will be a solution to this issue.
Thank you so much. And last, we're going to have Greg Lansman.
Thanks. Really important discussion, particularly this question. A couple of things. One is we, part of what will change this is changing the accountability system within CPD in terms of discipline and how internal issues are resolved. Previously, it was all peer review. And in the last contract, we got rid of that. And so that is a huge change where we are now leading the country again, in terms of major reforms that will improve accountability and 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 community relationships, change these statistics, I think, very significantly. Getting rid of peer review is is a big deal and I think the manager and mayor deserve a lot of credit. Other council members, I mean, this was something we fully supported across the board at City Hall this year, big change. The second one is the Citizen Complaint Authority. The they asked for $400,000 to make sure they got through the backlog. The administration tried to get them halfway there. I fought for the rest of it to ensure that they get through that backlog as quickly as possible because Kevin's right, like that, getting those cases done is at the heart of the community police relationship work that is so vital. And then finally, we passed a about measure a couple of years ago, something I led on the Public Safety Academy, which provides additional points for CPS students to become police officers, firefighters. And there is that gap as as Galen mentioned, but but working with folks to get them into the call center to be on track, to be a part of our police force, that will make a big difference in in diversifying CPD for the long run.
All right. Thank you so much. We are coming to a close this evening for this group, but we will be back promptly at 8:00 PM with our very last group of city council candidates. So I just wanted to mention again, our co sponsors are the Legal Women Voters of the Cincinnati Area, the Women City Club of Greater Cincinnati and the Urban League of Southwestern Ohio. So we are going to allow one minute for each candidate to provide some closing remarks. And we're going to start back with Greg Lansman.
Well, thank you again to the Urban League, League of Women Voters, to my favorite organizations and to the candidates and for everyone watching, three hours is a long time. You guys are awesome. I I decided to run for reelection for two reasons. One is there's a ton more to do around what it's going to take to make Cincinnati an infinitely better place for children and families, improving core services, housing stability, childcare for all, a whole host of things that I want to continue to work on and make sure get done. The second is that with a new mayor and and council, we have the opportunity to fundamentally transform the culture at City Hall, which I want to help lead on, where people are working together across every kind of division. There the fighting is over, where people really are just digging in, getting the work done and getting actual meaningful results for folks.
Right. Next, we are going to hear from Galen Gordon.
Thank you again to the residents, citizens, Cincinnati for taking time out of your evening, dinner time to give us an opportunity to be able to engage and and give you a little bit of insight onto our thoughts on how the city should be ran, especially as it pertains to our police department. And thank you again to our sponsors for providing this forum in this situation. So again, my name is Galen G. Gordon and my website is galenforcincinnati.com. We've got all kinds of opportunities for you to get involved and get engaged. And so you can email me, call me, go on to volunteer sign up, it's just on the website. All that you want to learn or would like to learn, I'm happy to have individual conversations as well. I appreciate Cincinnati. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have closing remarks from Jackie Frondor.
Thank you so much again. This has been such a great opportunity. Thank you to the Legal Women Voters and all of the co sponsors tonight. And yes, thank you to all the viewers who tuned in and all the viewers who are going to go on and watch this later. You are engaged Cincinnadians and that is something you should be very proud of. That's what makes our city move forward year after year. So thank you so much to you voters out there tuning in. If you want to learn more about me, my website is jackiefrondor.com. Hearing all this discussion, being with my fellow candidates, I'm inspired, I am hopeful. I have no doubt that once we, you know, get a room together and we we work together, that we will be able to solve some of the problems facing our city right now. Really, if anything that I got out of this was was hope and I'm so excited to see the rest of the journey through through this election. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we will have closing remarks from Kevin Flynn.
I'm Kevin Flynn. I really figured that I would never be back in this situation doing doing these discussions. I'll tell you, it's a lot easier doing them through Zoom than it was traveling from community council to community council, racing to get to the next one. So thank you for putting this forum on. I really am running to restore integrity to City Hall. We are at a crossroads. Our city is at a crossroads and we have the opportunity to take the high road, to bring Cincinnati to the forefront once again as the best run city in America. We have a lot of great things going for us and we've had a lot of bad things happen in the last couple of years. We need to stop the bad, bring in the good. And my website is flynforcincinnati.com.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have John Mayer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Urban League, the Women City Club, Women League of Voters and you, Desiree, for hosting us. I really appreciate it. It's a great forum and these are very important topics. Again, I'd like to, I have a vision for the police department and I think that we need to address continually funding the Citizens Complaint Authority. We need better community engagement, better crisis response, and we need to improve on our racial disparities. I am completely willing and open to the transparency and accountability that need to happen at City Hall and I invite it. I have the stamina, integrity and focus to tackle these problems. My name is John Mayer. My website is mairforcincinnati.com. That's M A H E R for cincinnati.com. We can't arrest our way out of these problems and we need people who are empathetic to that. We need more diversity. We need community oriented policing. And we need to really focus in on the mental health and crisis response. A vote for John Mayer will secure these issues for you.
Thank you so much. And next we will have Victoria Parks.
Thank you. I am Victoria Parks, Air Force veteran, former county commissioner, lifelong Cincinnatian and endorsed Democrat running for Cincinnati City Council. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, Urban League and the Women City Club of Greater Cincinnati for hosting this event. And I thank all of you for watching and being engaged in active citizens in our democracy. I humbly ask you for your vote this November and I hope that you will go to voteparks.com to join our team and support my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you so much and I just wanted to thank all the candidates for showing up at the seven o'clock hour on time and prepared to engage with citizens. I want to let the citizens know that this forum will be available for replay on the League of Women Voters Cincinnati Area's Facebook page as well as on YouTube. You can also go to our website to access the replay as well. And as I said before, our online resource, vote411.org will also have the link to this forum. So as you do your So as you do your candidate research um, and figure out who you're voting for, this information will be available as well as the candidate's additional responses to our written voter guide um, questions. So I would just like to have this opportunity for the candidates that are logged on right now. You all can um, leave this meeting and we will resume promptly at eight o'clock with a whole new set of candidates. So um, check back in at eight and we will be finishing up this evening.